She said we're not having a year for you to pick off this pass.
We all have a pass.
Can we get that back in here?
That was pretty bad.
We have a poem, if y'all are ready, Mr. Soundman, when you get the audio going. Okay, we have two sets of minutes to approve, January the eighth and January the sixteenth. That says two thousand, I think, maybe, I think she said six thousand and one. Have the graphical areas? Have you had an opportunity to view?
On the, the radio, sixteenth, where the amendment was.
Meeting of the sixteenth?
December the twelfth, when it's fixed.
The amendment about the newspaper article, is that what you signed up?
Yes.
You mean, did she correct the minutes?
It needs to be corrected, and the correction should be.
Yep, it should be. Had it happened in the sixteenth, maybe?
Yes.
Or was that?
The meeting, it'd be on the meeting of the twelfth, amendment was. Amendment was on the sixteenth, but the meeting was the twelfth, it was correct. The meeting was correct, so December the twelfth.
The twelfth, the February?
December.
December, oh, he's going back to December. I don't, I don't, where's the minute book? That's, that's the place to look.
It ought to be in.
It would be in the minute book, it just cracked it yet, if not, it would have to be corrected. She didn't crack ours, I'm sure. She would have cracked it in the minute, in the minute book.
Oh, by the way, you made it all destroyed.
If they can correct it, I'll know, because that's.
Obey, was that more about the recreation board?
Yes.
Motion of Jimmy Hanes to table amendment one sixteen oh one. Any other, any other discussion about the minutes? Our motion approved, and that's second, Sam, Obey made the motion, and Sam, second. We'll try to go. All in favor of the minutes? Bye for another yes, okay? Uh, financial statement, any question on that?
I have, I have a couple.
Okay.
Steve?
Yes.
You can probably answer it for me. On the, the supplies of streets. It's nine thirty, one fifty-two. And then you got street lights, fourteen sixty-seven fifty-two, what's, what's the, what's the difference?
Street lights is when the light's gonna come down, turn the support and stuff out.
Okay. And that's fourteen sixty-seven?
Fourteen hundred or fourteen?
Fourteen hundred and sixty-seven dollars, seventy-two cents.
In all the real honesty, I'm not really sure what that is.
Would you find out for me?
Yep.
Any other questions? Motion to approve financial statements, Jerry Campbell, Terry Waller second. Any other questions, if not, raise your hand if you're for it. Bye for another yes, okay? Getting to the public request item on the agenda. Is there anyone who wants to address the council? That's not on the agenda already. Okay, Park, you have a report, uh, Rowan, do you have anything? Steven?
Yeah, I was just on the club day, trying to get the lens cleaned up. I'm hoping we have pretty good weather, have everything cleaned up in three, four weeks, so. On first order. Then we keep that chip for a while, the paper stuff in the backyard and stuff, right now we'll make a trip around about that way. And, uh, we got the FEMA application turned in. Uh, the states decided to step in and help, but, uh, looks like we're gonna get a fairly decent amount of money back from that.
Steve won't pat yourself on the back, but I'll tell you what, what transpired. We attended all the FEMA meetings, tried to get educated and take notes. And, uh, we got through the, the second, third meeting. Steve came back and started to work on front, on paper, now I attended. They gave us six books of instruction. Anyway, he worked on that thing, I know, a full week, didn't he, Steve? But, uh, they, they came and paid us a surprise visit. And they wanted to see what he had done, and they wanted to see what the project looked like, so he took them out and showed them around. And they came back and looked over his work, and, uh. They came back, they said that was fine, sent it on in, and they came back, the next day I believe it was, and wanted him to sign a waiver, so they could use that to show to all the other cities, so they'd allow it to come out. So, things is big, big. Anybody who reports, Kerry, you're a toddler, you're smarter than me. That all you have, Steven?
Yes, sir.
For many reports. Kerry, do you have one on the historical society?
The historical society has filed two applications for two historical markers. One for the city of How and one for First Christian Church. And at the present, they are nine hundred and fifty dollars each. But the time it's processed, their time may be a thousand. They go up, a hundred every year.
Park Recreation? Who's gonna do that? The minutes, does Dana have that? She was gonna get, okay, she was, she was not here, so.
Um, they.
He didn't bring it. Let's see. Yeah, I guess that was very good, but they don't have a minute. You don't have a minute, so.
From the January twenty-fourth meeting?
Twenty-fourth meeting?
Yes, sir, I did.
If you'd like to be.
Right.
Ma'am?
January the twenty-fourth?
Yes, she got it.
Yeah, we got that, I'm sorry, we got that.
It's okay.
Well, she can still read it.
If you'd like to tell everybody what you done, go ahead, please, okay?
On the twenty-fourth meeting, um, the board members that were there, Davey and Vern, Rod Hawkins, Leonard Hudson, Tony McLean, Robbie Seagroves, and Diana Walsh. The minutes of the July twenty-sixth meeting were approved by Robbie Seagroves, motion carried. We discussed feasibility of the ball deal, no action was taken at the time. We had a motion by Rod Hawkins to table the discussion on contact with commissioners until the next meeting, uh, second by Leonard Hudson, motion carried. Then we had a discussion with Todd Cave regarding the park development. We had a motion by Tony McLean to revise Cave's proposal to develop the park feasibility study, second by Leonard Hudson, motion carried. We had a motion by Robbie Seagroves to approve the resignation of Sherry White, that was seconded by Tony McLean, motion carried. And then we had a motion by Robbie Seagroves to appoint Diana Walsh as park director, second by Tony McLean, motion carried by Davey and Vern. And we had a discussed parker at board member tenant city council meeting, Davey and Vern is having a schedule drawn up to where coming from Park District Board is present at Austin County. And Winter?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Still any questions concerning this? Now, we're going, looking at old business, uh, application for Mr. Collins, requests a rezon with two hundred, about fourteen hundred foot long. Along North Collins Freeway frontage, and C three agriculture. From agriculture to C three, and proposal property construction of airboards. Y'all want to discuss that before you take any action, or you want to do it later? I think you got a letter from Mr. Collins, maybe I did, and I told her to put it in your file. And, uh, his man was supposed to been here tonight, I don't see him. Uh, the sign man was supposed to have been here. And, uh, he wasn't. I don't think we're in a position, ready to take any action this time anyway, are we?
I'd like to wait until we get her.
Somebody give him a motion to table and we'll go on. Will they move to table? Give me a second, any discussion on the table? Not all in favor of table, then raise your hand. Bye for another yes. Okay, the next item is executive session. Uh, before we start this, I tell y'all, we, we probably will not be long, if you want to wait out inside somewhere, but. I'll do that to make the announcement that the council will begin its executive session on the twentieth day of February two thousand and one, at six twelve, Ms. Barbara. Six twelve. And the subject matter of this executive session deliberation is to discuss confirmation of attorney on the items of City of Van Alstey versus City of Havana et al. We will talk. Any other items under general, if you'd like me to stay, or we have to stay, but if not, I'll go ahead and exit at this point. If there's something, though, that you'd like to say, or what you have to do so. I don't, I don't see anything. Okay, I'll carry on there. Okay. If it turns open session, is there no action? Yeah. Uh, our next item is to consider the current TXU gas filling and deregulation electricity filling information by Miss enthusiastic, Miss dark Martha Dorn.
Well, since all this modern technology doesn't want to work, now that we moved it from one world to the other, I'll give you kind of a brief synopsis. The first thing I want to do is pass out some information, uh, to y'all and talk a little bit about, um, how we have found that for all of us, it's been more expensive for us to heat our homes with natural gas, and. I know that I've gotten lots of calls, and you probably have too, so I thought that you might appreciate some of this information that's on, in this packet I put together. And, uh, it really does address some of the problems that we have seen. We've been real spoiled at the price of natural gas, and having had one of the extremist cold winters that we have seen in a long time. And then the price of, of natural gas going from where it was last year at two dollars and fourteen cents per million BTU. Up to over ten, almost eleven million BTU, it's really been expensive. Uh, one thing that our rate payers have been able to, uh, take advantage of is that we do have short and long-term contracts. And we store our natural gas that we purchased at, at lesser cost at different times of the year. And we have blended that with the price of the gas that we've purchased, so our customers have seen a reduced price. They are not paying the price that we see at the Houston ship channel that a lot of other customers have paid. So, that's some of the things and some information that I, I felt like would probably be real beneficial to you. The others, if you turn the page, there is a graph over there, and that probably tells the story the best. At the top, it does show what the daily gas cost is, and then it does show the rate that our customers have been paying. Now, I'm talking about rate, I want to say that I'm talking about the fuel cost rate, because the natural gas rate has stayed the same, but the railroad commission has ruled that. Due to the flexibility and the cost of the gas, that is a straight pass-through to the customer. That is not, that is not in the rate base, that goes straight through, there is no profit on that. Then it also shows what the average consumption of, um, natural gas was, and of course, we know how cold it was, the blue line tells the story of what we used. And then it also shows, uh, what the monthly temperature was. So with that information, I just wanted to kind of update you on where we were with the gas and, and what our customers were seeing and you and I were paying, so. I wanted to bring this really neat presentation to you, talk to you about deregulation, and I'm really disappointed after I went from Durant to Bonham to pick up this sophisticated machinery. But I want to talk to you a little bit about deregulation, because it's something that we're going to hear from now until January. We heard it in the last legislature, it was passed, and it is very important. And I feel like a lot of our consumers out there, people statewide, are not really in tune to what is going on. So, I want to talk to you a little bit about what we call stay the course. And just a real quick recap, uh, May of nineteen ninety-five, we did something that California didn't do, and Texas isn't California. And this is where we're going to shine, in the fact that wholesale competition was enacted by the legislature, which allowed for independent power producers to come in here and build power plants. So, we got power for the addition that California didn't have. We are now going to see, starting June the first, a pilot program that people can participate in. And a little bit about that, I'll talk just a little bit about that in just a minute. Uh, the key elements that the senate did, uh, Senate Bill seven did adopt was a competitive process. A price-to-be, which will be each of the retail energy providers' price out there. Uh, generating capacity by ownership, there's a limitation on that. We currently have thirty percent of the generation, and we have to get down to twenty percent of the generation. And our generation is being spun off, we are being unbundled. So, where I am today, we will be a wires company, and we will strictly transport electricity, which is completely different from what we have done in the past. And we will transport whoever you have chosen to be your energy provider. There are environmental regulations, we'll be talking a lot about green power, you'll have your choice if you want to purchase power that, that is from what we call green power, that's environmental friendly. It is a little bit more expensive, but for those that are real environmentalists, that feel like that's a, a real concern of theirs, they can purchase green power. And there's a lot of customer protection built in. So, as we move on and we go into competitive pricing, we're gonna talk about the price-to-be. And you know that our rates were frozen, and competition begins on January second of two thousand and two. So right now, our rate is frozen, and beginning when it, with competition, the small commercial and residential customers' rate will drop six percent. And that will be frozen for five years, or until we lose forty percent of our customer base. They feel like this will give the new individuals coming in, the new reps, an opportunity to go out there and see customers. And customers will be able to shop amongst the suppliers that are out there. We're gonna see a lot of improved air quality, because we have been required to reduce emissions in power plants, and you've probably heard a lot about that. Um, especially in some of the older power plants, we have stepped out and said, well, we're gonna do that up front. And now other power plants are having to invest in, in machinery that does reduce the emissions. And then you also have the green power option, which is like wind power. There's, uh, uh, wind generation out in West Texas. A gentleman has developed a wind farm out there, and we have contracted with him to purchase the power from those wind generators. Then can't consumer choice, um, there'll be retail licensing, licensing. And right now, uh, the other day, when I looked on the Public Utility Commission site, there were twelve retail energy providers that have signed up, that will be able to sell electricity to you. And we call those reps. There is an anti-slamming and anti-cramming, which we learned that from one of our sister utilities, and the legislature felt like that that was very important. That you wouldn't just be moved around and, and without your permission, so there are some things there that will help. There is a low-income program, where we will be working and promoting energy efficiency in the operation of equipment and different programs for them to participate in. Of course, you, you've probably seen, if you've been looking in the newspapers, that, uh, there's a lot of customer education out there. They have twenty-three million dollars to educate the consumer before all this starts. And, um, there are customer protections that has been provided by the Public Utility Commission, and they have a number that you can call, and they will provide protection if you feel like you have not been dealt with fairly. Some of the economic benefits for Texas is that, uh, there'll be a five point three billion, uh, gross dollars in state production due to the creation of these power plant facilities. And also, uh, there'll be anywhere from seven thousand to thirty-one thousand permanent jobs that this will bring about. I just hope I'm one of those. They keep telling us how we're gonna change, and it's kind of scary when they keep saying, we're just gonna be a wires company, when you don't see me out there in the middle of the night on a pole, and I know that I'm, I'm be able to take that on. There are increased incentives, and some of these things that you will be able to take advantage of, you know, um, we stopped doing any kind of competitive activity, such as the garden lights, which I think was probably the most controversial. But you'll be able to look at these reps and decide, they'll have a, a list of choices out there, what do you want in your package? Do you want just straight electricity provided to your house? Do you want garden lights? Do you want them to supply you with electric, gas, telephone, security cable, internet, um, a computer system? Do you want, uh, combined billing? Maybe you have three or four accounts, and they will combine all those into one bill, and you write one check. So there's a lot of opportunity out there, uh, for you to see what type of services they will have. Like I said, there's a pilot point, pilot program that does start June the first. A lot of the major industries, our large industries, have gotten a letter that said they can sign up between now and March the fifteenth to participate in the pilot program. They can go out there and choose their retail energy provider. We will also see, starting March the fifteenth, that option out there for the commercial and residential customer, and that will be open for a month. And you can sign up to participate in that. So, it's, it's an opportunity for six months for individuals to participate. Now, if they get a tremendous amount of customers that want to do this, if they get over five percent of the customer base, they will go into a lottery system. So there'll be five percent of the residential, five percent of the commercial, and five percent of the industrial customers that can participate in this pilot program. And unlike California, we're gonna see if we can't work out the kinks in six months and make sure that we have a program that works. I will share with you that deregulation across the US has worked, you know, it seems like we just heard the doom, and what's gone on in California. But in Philadelphia, um, they have said that, uh, suppliers and brokers have seen as much as twenty percent lower than the traditional utility costs. So there are, are some plans that do work. Early returns in the Virginia's pilot project show competing electric providers offering prices up to twenty percent lower than the previous regulatory rate. And in Pittsburgh, some consumers through online aggregation have saved up to thirty percent of their electric bills. And I want to address aggregation. When they first started out, talked about this in legislature, I had to go get the dictionary. And we are seeing this, um, a lot of the cities are doing this, they're going with other cities and combining, and they want to aggregate their load. Take all of their metering locations and say, I have this much a kilowatt hour, so and so has this much, together we bring you this much business. What can you provide for us? What kind of cost can you provide for us? Another location would be like, maybe school districts would combine together. Uh, maybe a homeowner's group, several homeowner's groups, so you can aggregate load. And the three behind that is, you have X number of people that use X amount of kilowatt hours, so involve, you can get a better price. So there are programs that do work, even if California has had some problems. So there are programs that do work, even if California has had some problems. There are 130 suppliers that are competing for customers' business in the state of Pennsylvania. They have 500,000-plus customers that have switched providers in their plan. It has created 36,000 new jobs by 2004 and almost an 18% decrease in the revenue per kilowatt hour from '98 to '99. So they have had a successful program. Now, I hate to point the finger, but I want, we seem like every day or every week, there's something new that comes up in California that we have to defend. And some of the things that went wrong was they didn't anticipate the demand in their program. And they didn't have the reserves that was needed. We've already deregulated our wholesale market. They look to states on the outside to supply them power. They have this not in my backyard attitude. They want to go to some other state and purchase their power. They also have some problems with their transmission and the fact that if they did have somebody create power and try to supply it to them, they wouldn't be able to transport it because they don't want transmission lines in their backyard. So they have some problems out there that they're going to have to overcome. So they have limited their market and the supply and demand has really kicked in. And I also want to share with you that when they complain about their bill, they're paying a $75 bill where you and I are paying a $125 bill. So keep that in the back of your mind when you hear them start their song and dance about the outages that they're having. They, historically, they have licensed quite a few power plants out there, but historically only 50% of those plants go directly in service. And this is due to the environmentalists that are out there and the legislative laws that have been passed. We have been very fortunate in the fact that we have three gentlemen that were really responsible for our program that have gone before the legislature. David, Senator David Sidley, Representative Steve Woolens, and the Public Utility Chairman Pat Wood. All worked with investor-owned utilities, the co-ops, the environmentalists to put together a plan that they felt like would work for deregulation. And I think that we're going to hear a lot of that in the legislature and you're going to hear these three gentlemen really talk about how hard everybody worked to make it a plan and they don't want to see any change and they don't want California to influence their program. So as the sign says, don't miss what's happening. So the other thing that I want to share with you is that in the year 2000, there's 6,169 megawatts of power, new generation that's out there. In the year 2001, there'll be over 8,000 megawatts. And in 2002 to '04, 15,000 megawatts of power to meet our growing population in our state. And we're going to see a lot of growth in economic development because this is going to be one thing, as plants expand, they may stay their presence in California or some of these other states, but they're going to move here because of the reputation that we have and the reserves that have been built. So with that, I want to close and say that you will see a lot about deregulation in the coming months that I suggest to you that you study and that you talk and see what's going on because you will have a choice to make. And remember that you've been our customer for a long time and we really worked hard to have a program for you. And we will see you on the other side. So go to your website, to the Public Utility Commission website. It's just like all the representatives, PUC.state.texas.us. And there's an update on there because laws are being made. There'll be laws made all the way up until December. But you'll also see who's out there that you can purchase power from. So, and if you have any questions, call me. I'll be glad to answer any that I can, but we do have a code of conduct and we are really bound by what we say about the other side of our business, but I can't help you find
somebody that can answer your question.
Thank you, Mark.
You're probably, I mean, I apologize if the equipment didn't work.
Steve, would you help her? Sure she wants to go home, he's suffering, I'm sure you're going to stay with her.
No, I'm not staying with her.
Sorry, I got that. I thought she was going to leave. Didn't want to carry.
I might just leave, but we get it doesn't work.
Okay, thank you for that information, Mark. Consider recommendations from Park and Recreation for appointment for vacant board position. I understand we have one vacancy. Now, what, where is the Park and Recreation, are you the appointee, 14th, 15th?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell them what you have?
The Park and Recreation Board would like to recommend the appointment of Rob Plant with tonight to fill the vacant spot.
Yeah, I'm.
Supposed to be Rob with a B.
Sure, why it's observed on there, the board contacted Leah from last meeting and said that she would like to. That makes two nominations for recommendations. Share, this young man, share it.
You need a motion.
You need a motion to recommend.
I make a motion, I accept the Park and Recreation's recommendation.
Okay, the motion was to accept the Park and Recreation's recommendation. Is there a second? Carrie, second. Any further discussion? Not all invited, raise your hand. Both are opposed? Want to oppose? Accept resignation of Howe Community Library Board member Carrie Walker. Well, that's what we just got to do.
I'll hear twice.
She put, she put to hear the recommendation and then she went ahead and listed, it's all one, how they made it.
Okay, I won't make a statement.
Okay.
Before Carrie makes that statement, I would like, I don't know what statement she's making, but I would like to say that I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, she has been a tireless worker for the library. And I personally really hate to see her tend to her resignation because I don't know how many people are clamoring to be on that board, but I doubt seriously why. And we need to, we need to continue to keep people that are interested, that are tireless, and that would like to serve. So I would like to see Carrie reconsider.
I don't know whether it'd be appropriate for me to try to address what you said or attorney. Someone has raised the question like we had, it wasn't any, there wasn't any confusion with one we had years ago with the park chief and the city council or Park and Recreation City Council. This one, this situation that Carrie is in is different. You correct me if I get wrong here, James, is different to the point. There was an agreement between the library and the city and then after that agreement was done, after the cohesion was made, months after, the student came back and this was amended to give the student a full control. So there's, there's some question, Carrie just acknowledged and she didn't want to stir it or something, I'll be honest with you.
Well, fine, and I probably spoke out to her and I should have called Carrie. They talked her private later. Although, I was looking at a closed meeting, an open meeting, information gave me, gee, I can't even call anybody anymore.
This is the third time, this is the third time we've been through this and I think she finally just got tired of it.
Well, I appreciate Carrie and I just wanted to make that statement. But I appreciate her and her tireless efforts. And I just really hate to see her. I don't know the circumstances behind it. I know her identity, but very sheltered and very.
I think I said about as much as I could say at that time. If you've got any more questions you need to ask, go ahead and tell them.
I got a brother-in-law that's been in town. They've got a pastor named. I can't, I can't get away from these two.
Anyway, you have, you have Carrie.
I, I still. Oh, July the 20th, 1999, I was appointed by the Howe City Council to serve as one of the city's representatives on the Howe Community Library Board. The board, the term was for two years. This appointment has been questioned if a councilperson could serve on both city council and city-appointed member of the library board. I was a member of the group who organized the library in the beginning under the leadership of Jean Norman. I volunteer for numerous organizations in Howe and all over Grayson County because I have the time and I enjoy promoting the city of Howe. My vote at the last library board meeting on January the 10th was to vote yes to elect Lana Rideout as secretary of the board. This council has more important business to transact than to discuss this matter over and over and over. I do not want to cause any trouble for the city of Howe. My council seat is priority one in all of my volunteer work. And I, councilperson Carrie Walker, resign from the Howe Community Library Board effective immediately.
Thank you, Carrie. I know it took a lot to say, although we didn't expect you, what you tried to do in this, you know, I can remember. You heard Carrie's resignation. You want to accept?
I reluctantly accept that.
Motion, accept, reluctantly. Time, second, Carrie, second, reluctantly. Any discussion on the matter further? If not, raise your hand if you want to vote. We have four for, yes, reluctantly, none. Lockout from water, it's safe. Appoint Howe Community Library Board member to unexpired term of business. Do you all have anybody? Do you have, Carrie?
No.
On the table left in front of the time, unless somebody raises their hand. On the table, give me a motion to table. Carrie moves, Jimmy hangs, second to table. Motion was to table until we have a prospect. All in favor, raise your hand. I'm calling, you want to use. The next item, James, we don't need to discuss the next item, joining the city of Vanoss thing, this item is.
There's no action there.
No action, so we're going, the next item is discuss use of the senior nutrition fund and rail tone wheel program. Since that's a discussion item, we can't take action or not take action. I'm going to tell you what transpired. The senior nutrition center for the county, for the tri-county area, did not have enough response in the Howe Center for them to continue. They brought it to us, brought it to you. You approved that with the understanding that they would continue to take care of the homebound people. And they agreed to do that and they are, they're bringing Sherman, someone from Sherman is bringing the food down every day. I think there's five to six or seven people, I'm not sure the exact number. After that, after this was done, Mr. French called me and asked me if we could have contributed to that fund to the city since they're having to pay somebody 30 cents a month for delivering the food.
Say what? I, I went and delivered meals every Wednesday and I didn't charge 30 cents a month.
I never did any, Sam, but this.
Well, I think this is ridiculous for us to pay somebody for Sherman. We had enough volunteers in there to do it. What we need to do is we need to find somebody in Howe that's interesting in organizing them and working with that thing. And I don't know who it was, but when Maude and Ray Henderson were in the house, that was a thriving community effort and citizens of Howe, elderly of Howe, really enjoying it. Now, you know, we've had some good people. The last one, she was a nice lady, a good lady, but, you know, she was hands-free. I think we need to, we need to try to find somebody and get that place opened up.
If we found someone, could we get it open again?
Yes.
If, if, if the trade. Let me, let me explain. This has not just been a one or two-year thing now. None of y'all were on the council when I brought it to the council in 1991 or '92 or '98, I'm not sure when. We were having one or two people a day when it was over here and had been before 1992 coming to eat. I went over and started eating before I got open, that started eating, so they would have somebody. They would not come then, Sam, and I can honestly say they remain being tabicated on the list to make it look good. And that's not good and we didn't want that.
Well, no, it's been.
And they built a fire under the van. I asked the council, I said, but we didn't discuss if we either dispose it or get some people over there because, you know, it's, it's silly to have it for one or two. But.
And they weren't even taking any out of the food from there.
But I think if, if we could find the right person to organize it and that would promote it, there's a lot of people, a lot of elderly people that probably stay in their homes and really need to get out and have interface with other people and some activities. I think therein lies the problem, you know? We haven't had someone that can really organize that and having activities part of that service or ministry.
Would you like to, would you like to serve as a committee of one to try to activate that? Yeah, we did open it down.
I'll go talk to Carrie Walker since he's had so much free time now.
I'm serious, I've watched this thing. They have not had any response down there yet.
No, and we had some nice ladies that cooked good meals, but I think it really needs someone that can organize and promote. And I, and I didn't need to get so emotional about, about paying these guys all the time because that's a long way.
Now, there's a difference, Sam, in you and me volunteering. I volunteer for everything coming on. I've never taken a dime yet, but some people are not that way. It's a job for them. They're hiring, they can't get people to volunteer.
Well, that's a shame, but.
And they use their automobile.
And what, it's not that I, that not that I really want to volunteer, well, I've been blessed by the people I've met delivering the meals. There are some wonderful people.
Yes, there are.
They need some contact, I think.
You'll remember two years ago, they threatened to cut it off. In fact, they gave us a cutoff date because there was no food left. And we said, I personally told guests, no, I'll pay the first month myself and then we'll start working getting other volunteers to help put some money in the food.
Well, I.
And if the government tried to put some more money in it, we got it. That was just a matter of food, but we still weren't feeding that.
But I, I just think we need to, since you're saying, saying that, you know, we can always get that back. I can always, we're going to look around and see if we can find somebody. Maybe the council.
You're going to take that job?
I'll take what you have. I'm going to look around and I know Carrie Walker.
Do you, do you want, do you want us to volunteer some money to them while we're waiting? Or just leave it like it is?
I'm just leaving like it is. But we may find somebody next week.
Well, what I'm saying, they're telling us, you know, they're probably spending $100 a month to deliver it down here.
Who is this?
I just want to know what to tell Mr. French when he calls back. He called back this last week and wouldn't know if we're doing anything else. I said, we're on deck.
Well, tell him Sam is coming.
Sam is a committee of one, a committee of one to get that center started. Don't run off with the pots and pans, guests.
I'm helping, I'm helping.
You know, I just think that it's worth the effort to try to see if we can find something. We'll be mentioning. We'll be mentioning, if we need to take a survey to find out in the community, maybe that's an option here, in the near future. And again, I just think we need a motion type of...
See what, see what, what it's gonna take to get these people out, you know?
Well, now, they won't play games down there, that's been tried before. They just come and eat, and they go home.
That's the ones that are down there now. I remember when it was over here, with Maude Anderson, I mean, those guys, forty-two airbags.
Did it there.
That's right. Those old goats is over there playing forty-two.
Times have changed, Sam, but anyway, give me a motion to table until the committee does the survey, and let's go on. Sam moves to table, James seconds, all in favor? Five far, none against, okay. I'm getting hungry, it's already seven o'clock. Um, discuss sidewalks and street. You want to have discussion, I guess, before somebody makes a motion. If not, give me a motion, we'll discuss it later. I think we need to discuss it first, but I don't think, I really don't know what we're talking about.
I, I asked to put this on the agenda, and I just had some questions, but I wanted to ask. Uh, first question was, have we found out anything on the marking of Ponderosa? Didn't you say something about that in Long...
Well, no, not on, a couple meetings. Yeah, we had that scheduled first, but when the street, when the, when the businesses, I mean, when the traffic got so bad down here, only to, we finally got a pretty weekend, we caught a head. It wasn't pretty, the guy sat there at midnight, it's way, pretty, before he could pay us this morning. Anyway, he couldn't do but one of them, because he had another job that he'd been working as long as us, and he said, I'll do your, sit downtown, and then I'll do the Ponderosa the next time, so...
So it's still on, it's still on the table?
Yeah, we'll be done. Yes, I, I had a price for him for both of them, we've already paid him for the, uh, the work down here, and, uh, we haven't paid him for the other, because he hadn't done it.
Um, I also have a question about, that's one reason I asked about the money for the street life, and whatever that animal wants. So, I know it's kind of early, but, but pardon me, can't answer this question right off the bat, if we got plans for, what have we got plans for streets and, and I know the weather is really poor some of the streets up, and I was kind of wondering, what's the, what's the game plan, if there's any, and have you thought about it?
Yeah, we, we done some talking. I know on the street parts, as soon as we can get them on the chip, then we can dump them back. And we'll start working on them, and on the sidewalks and stuff, what I thought about doing was trying to fit it in their budget, budget next year, so probably doing all of, the ones that are messed up.
That was one too, nice question. Did you discuss them, and have they taken any action?
Can I discuss one more thing about the streets?
Yes, sir.
They're not ours. That excuse for West Control Road, nine oh two to the passport is dick's, I told him to go.
They're coming to patch it up, although they're, remember, they're not fixing it so wet it's driving.
We get out here and try to find a little passport down here, you, like a rug board.
They come to put some asphalt in there, that time we call them.
And they did come to put another layer in.
Yeah, but they can't do that, but they just sort of wanted to dry it away. They just put one layer on that road, they, they were gonna put two, but the rain set in, and they said it would not stick, it'd be useless, so they left one layer on, said we'll, we'll keep it patched up, when it gets ripe for putting another layer on, we'll come down and fix it and finish.
I think they can do it and patch it.
Is that a way for them to put the asphalt on it?
Well, they did write it for it, but it, but it just, it's too wet to go, it didn't stick. But anyway, that's, does that answer your question here?
Yeah. Uh, motion table.
Well, we just know our actions. Uh, discuss grants available to people for city concerns.
I put this on the agenda too. I, I was just curious about, um, what our procedures are as far as applying for grants. Is it a wait until we have the habit type situation, or are we constantly looking for different ways to get grant money, or foundation money, or whatever money, or whatever this, we might have city concerns? And I said city concerns because there wasn't any specific thing I had in mind, just what's our, what's our procedures on that? I guess is more master. Do we wait until we have a need before we apply for grants?
I'll tell you what I know of, is the only, the only low participation grant money that we're able to afford that I know of is for the community development block grant system, that is federal money coming into the state. And with that, we do not have to, according to your size, five, five percent for the grant, only up ten to fifteen. Uh, if you go beyond that, the only ones that I know of, uh, and I had talked, I meant to talk to you about the park, Ernest Melton, who worked for the soil conservation place, the place we went to to talk about this creek, Ernest sent words to me, called him, thought he knew we was gonna be working, um, on the park per se, the baseball field and stuff. He said that he knew of a place where he might, that qualified for some grant money, that, that probably, we don't, uh, we know about parks and parks, and that's a fifty-fifty situation, and you turn control over to him. I don't know, I, I, I tried to get Ernest two or three times, and you were in there one day when I called him, and I, I haven't been able to, to touch base with him, but I'm trying to find out if he's talking about some of the foundations that are out there. And, and I kind of think maybe that might be an avenue that he's looking at for the park, because there are foundations participating. We just got through our little group in Grayson County that are, that have been striving for three years to light, have holiday night at Lloyd Park. We have obtained the funds from two foundations to do the first year, get it sorted out, and get it moved. So I know there are foundations, but until I can get the various, I don't know which ones they are, but as soon as I find out, I'll let you all know.
Well, I, I, you know, I don't know what's all out there as far as grants and things, but, you know, and this is not maybe an issue right now, but something that I just thought about, that, you know, like, if we wanted to look into getting an early warning system or something like that for the city, you know, do we have access to, to other places we can look for grants other than just one that you...
I talked to a guy that, it's been last, last week, he's from DUTO, I can't remember his name, but they started a new program down there. You just put them on a container, and that's all they do is drive the rent. And on the same token, when you get a grant, they give a percentage of that grant for doing the work, but guarantee a grant a week does not say you'll get it. But he says they hit a federal save and private corporation.
Well, that's what I'm kind of interested...
I haven't been able to research it this much, I don't want to do this one, I haven't wrote it up.
Well, that, that's kind of what I'm interested in finding now, all there are other things out there other than just the one particular place that we go to right now, you know, just see, in my mind, if anything out there we could even use. But I think it's something we need to consider and, and look at.
I'll, I'll have that ready. Thanks, ma'am.
I have, Ernest, you've been searching your place after we made this town, to apply for all the grants given. Jerry, I need that part of, I applied with y'all, we got the same, but that means we applied to seven foundations, and we got a sorry back from all of them.
Uh, that's just something I think we need to, we need to consider, keep in mind, apparently you're already on, on that, so that's just something I think...
Discuss taking, taking of executive sessions.
I'll put this on the agenda too. Uh, I have. Uh, I just, I thought it might be, uh, to our benefit, maybe to possibly consider taking our executive sessions as well, not just our open meetings, but, uh, and, you know, not for any other main, or any specific, specific reason, other than just to have a more accurate account of what was discussed and what was said, uh, during the executive council meetings, executive meetings, uh, when we had them. I've done a little research, Miss, uh, Dana gave me some stuff that she had, I think it's in our, in our packet, and I've also looked at the T M L, what do we call this name, notebook, workbook, whatever it's called, and read, read about it. Uh, there's nothing, uh, illegal about it, we can do it if we choose to do it. Uh, there are some exceptions to, uh, some specific requirements as far as you having to keep them for two years, and if the judge will come, the judge is the only one that can have them, that type thing, you can see there. I don't know what, what, what part she gave you, uh, but you can notice in the outline of the council, I think she, yeah, in this chapter five, where it says council working meeting, it says in the very bottom of page twenty-five there, it says in lieu of certified agenda, governmental body may make a tape recording of the meeting, including an announcement made by the deciding officer at the beginning and the end of the meeting, in the date and time. Dana, uh, was concerned about listening of the tapes not being able to be listened to by anybody other than a judge, or those that are involved in litigation, or something like that, but it does say that a member of a governmental body who participated in the closing meeting can't listen to. And, uh, you know, I just thought, uh, it's something that needs to be brought to the council's attention and considered, and I think it'd be a good idea for, uh, just accuracy and that type of thing.
Well, generally speaking, uh, when we come out of the executive session, if there's some action to take, I mean, the action is brought, brought, you know, as part of the minutes, uh, what is a certified copy, is that basically just a statement, hey, we went into executive session, came out of executive session...
This, this, this was planned right here, and when we went in, when we went in, went out, under code, uh, the state, state anecdotes, five fifty-one, that's a certified agenda. There's nobody interested in what you say in that executive session, because you're speaking with either private or yourself, or with your attorney, and, and I'm not trying to burst James's balloon, but, you know, this has come up a time or two before, but we've never, we've never considered it. We talked to our attorney about it, he says very few, very few cities do that, and, and it's because of what you must contribute to after you do it. We had their security, we gave it security, we lumped up. And I personally don't recommend it, but we're disagreeing with other things, you know, to keep doing, but I just don't agree with you.
I may be right, our city attorney told us one night, we went to the executive session, first thing he said was, get the technical rel.
We don't, we don't want it because of the hassle, actions that you can be in lawsuits or whatever against, we really haven't done it.
Our, uh, our team assisted in the bringing.
Sometimes it works, sometimes it works.
Radio shack recorder?
Sometimes it works, and sometimes it don't.
That's what he said, well, they'll, they've had some trouble with people that have done that, and it builds a court and a legislature, I guess it often doesn't work, you can't understand what this is.
You need to let Jamie, Jim, you want to make the motion.
No, I'm just...
Otherwise, if there's no motion...
Bring it to the attention of the council.
I think I pretty well got the general idea about the council, Phil. Let's go on so we can get all these items covered. Consider request for Bobby Phillips versus the user that called her and left saw driving. This is the little fifty-foot patch of land, it's the only one we got left, that was given to the city, and all we had to do is mow it, we sold the other two, they want to buy this one. What's your opinion? Are you on discussing?
I think a motion is good.
No motion, uh, Sam, do it, have a motion, Carrie, second, Carrie.
I mean, we're, we're using...
Any discussion, it would be fifteen hundred dollars, what we got with the others for us, they pay any closing cost. And, uh, so you want the motion to read that, that we sell the property for the same price as we sold the other fifteen hundred dollars, they pay closing costs. We got that for you. If I get too passionate with this one here. Have a motion, second, all in favor? I, I'm getting, okay, let's move it on. Uh, discuss water and sewer lines located at three hundred fifty cords, that's your thinking.
Um, this term, along Beet Street, right where I took it, or run it to, turn, turn it. The guy got on to build a house through the water line that cuts more or less nearly across the middle of it, and I want to know what y'all would think about it, we moved the line and he paid for, uh, the materials, it's sitting at twenty-five hundred dollars right now, these materials are on, about, saying about waving across the paint bar to, it should take two days, I'm not sure if it's, uh, get a dugout to, we're gonna have to move, uh, roughly a hundred eighty foot of six-inch water line and one fire line.
Sam, you were on the council or were you not? After this was brought up before, this is part of Mr. Reed's project down there, getting the cord for the fire hydrant, is that where the house supposed to be? Uh, we voted through this council, I'd have to go back to the year, we voted to pay the materials to move that fire hydrant, if they would, and we voted to do the labor, if they buy the materials, because we want to get a lot, a house built on it, and get it on tax roll, well, there wasn't that much growth, and they, the people who owned it did not want to do that, they just declined it, it's that dormant all this time, and now we have a man who wants to build a house on it. I told Steve, in my opinion was, you know, what we would spend in labor would be less than equivalent of one year's taxes, I think we ought to get it on tax roll.
I read that in the minutes too, about the, the last year.
Yeah.
Is this the site property that's, uh, by Ted down on the town?
Yeah, they wanted to move the fire hydrant where they said it, and we told them it wasn't that simple. But we voted to do the labor on it, if they paid for the material, they sold it, which is...
I do that. I don't know, I ain't talked to him about it. I wanted to ask about his work for us, uh, and I think the fire hydrant moved up twenty feet, that one worked.
Just to bust a move.
Well, it's gonna be right at the road where...
We inspected, we didn't have anything, it was bad then.
So what's the agreement, you know?
Well, I haven't, I haven't talked back to him yet, I told him that let me, I was wanting to talk to y'all first, where I could tell him a pride, and what, I'd like, well, if y'all want to, what I'd like to see done is us move the water line and get it out back basically by the road where it should be, roughly gonna move it about fifteen or twenty feet over. It's gonna take, if you do it right, it'll take about a hundred eighty foot high, and I also added a ten percent contingency, because right now the six-inch P V Z five is just like this. And I was gonna tell him only ten percent, if we didn't use it, I'd give that back to him. Make it fair. Do you think Kerry is gonna do it? Yeah, uh, y'all say so. I just, I don't...
City do the labor, and you want to pay for Kerry?
Yeah, I think, we, we figured it out, if we get two good days, we ought to be able to do it in two days.
Would you get that in writing if he agrees to it?
You, you bet.
That is an assessment, now, I'll be moved, any more discussion? Not, I'll be moved, hold on, hold on.
Well, I was gonna say, well, my suggestion would be get the check first, before we're done anything.
We'll get all the tax...
That's my little, get the check first, and we don't, if we don't use the ten percent, we'll give him a check back.
Okay, we got a motion, Mr. Powers.
I'll carry it.
Carrie seconds, all in favor, raise your hand. That's tie up for, none against. Okay, approve the interlocal agreement with Grayson County to extend Calver Street to connect with, uh, the, two street on the other end, uh, that, we did not do that before, any y'all that weren't on the council, we didn't do it when, when the, the thoroughfare was put through there, but we didn't know it, and, uh, we couldn't, we couldn't do it. Now, we're gonna, people are building on it, I had two or three people, they're building all down that street, they asked me when we're gonna do it, and I said, I'll raise the council, here's the net, and they say get an interlocal agreement, get the county to do it, and it'll be cheaper. We're gonna have to do it. Carrie move? Sam seconds, any more discussion on it? No discussion, all in favor, say, James. Five far, none against, okay. Uh, next item is to, uh, seems like I missed one or something, did we get Phillip Phillips?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Bobby.
Uh, okay, next item is to, uh, call election for the May the fifth, election for a mayor and two council seats. What's your opinion? A move, have a move, but Jerry, to call the election on the May the fifth, for two council seats and a mayor. James, James got his up first, Sam. James seconds. All in favor? Five for, none against. Appoint May the fifth election officials, Donald Billstrap, Judge, alternate Judge Marianne Harper, and Court, or Clerk Betty Gordon. Any discussion? No, what's your opinion?
I move.
Kerry move. OB seconds. All in favor? Five for, none against. Okay, appoint May the fifth, early ballot board election officials, Donald Billstrap, Judge and alternate Judge Marianne Harper, and Clerk Betty Gordon. You need to discuss it, and you have a motion. James has a motion. Sam seconds. Ah, come on. All in favor, raise your hand. Five for, none against. Set hourly wait for election workers, and that is already set for us anyway. Six dollars. But just, just tell us, give me a motion to set hourly rate, rate at state. Kerry move, two seconds. Sam seconds. At state, right. That tells us what we need. All in favor? Five for, none against. Okay, we need to, we need to appoint a member to the Grayson County Ambulance Board, that's gonna be, that's not gonna be just, just how Val Steen got it, that's gonna be a whole town that are participating, and I highly recommend it, we appoint Jerry Campbell for that board, and he can serve on that. OB move. Sam seconds. All in favor? Five for, none against. Okay. Consider recommending assessment of ten cents per head for continued participation in TXU City Standing and Steering Committee. Electrical restruction and deregulation, we're gonna need all the help we can get before we get to it. That'll probably be about two hundred and thirty dollars or something like that. What's your opinion?
What, 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 did they just, did they just help us weigh through all this stuff?
That's just, that's just co-op group that we did in to study all rate cases, all complaints, everything to PUC and all that kind of stuff with, uh, Railroad Commission of Gas, PUC, Electric, Telecom, whatever. It's cheap, it's cheap, because they have, we've heard half the cities are in.
That's why they don't cheat us.
Yeah, my motion, form of sound. Any further discussion? If not, second. OB seconds. All in favor, none against. Five for. Okay, this is a public hearing, we all. An ordinance of the City of House to prohibit billboard signs, providing definitions, providing prohibitions, providing that signs permanently affixed and ground on the effective date of this ordinance shall constitute valid, non-conforming signs, providing a procedure for, of course, exceptions that appeals, providing a severe penalty clause, providing a sentencing clause, providing a contingency clause, providing a penalty clause, providing a publication clause, and providing an elective date. End of public hearing, unless you're ready to talk to me. They don't talk to me. Okay. End of public hearing. Now, the ordinance for that public hearing was ordinance number five twenty-six. What is your opinion? Do you have all the paperwork from our turn?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, we're out of public hearing, we're ready. Sam move, OB seconds. All in favor? Five for, none against. Y'all just went right on there. Hey, that's all of them.
I have a question to ask.
Okay.
How is Jerry worth them?
She's gonna get moved to a regular room, should be tomorrow. She's doing a lot better, she's up, I think, I think, a little bit, they're doing real good. May get to come home this weekend.
I'm glad y'all came, and you held their hands. I tell you what, it's so much better now, we got somebody setting that back. You, you were here to hear what the council had to say about the letter with Mr. Collins, weren't you? We handled that before you got here, and we tabled that, because we hadn't done our ordinance yet, so it'll be back.
I got a question for you. Houses deregulations a little bit, with this...
What's Sam come here?
They're generating their own, like, now, more time.
Right, has the option, I mean, you're not just still down at the first five years of Dylan. So we have the signs down there all the time, we sit down with Dylan. They have the, I don't know, Chris Taylor, or they can, I'm in. Participate, it's up to them, whatever they want to do. Oh, he's got, right, double stack. Understand, oh. They're just like a co-op, they have the option as to how they want to participate.